Okay, let us all stand please and have an invitation in the class. Commissioner Freeman, how about to leave us an invitation?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Our Father God thanked me for this day that you have brought us and given us. Thank you for this county of Gates. We thank you for all the citizens. We thank you for our county employees for what they do each and every day. God bless our fellow commissioners and my colleagues as we go about business of Gates County. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the Gates County Commissioners for April 5th, 2017. First order of business is to approve the amendments from March 1st, 2017 to March 20th, 2017. Are there any corrections?
Madam Chairman, it says corrections and I would notify if they had been incorporated. And if there are no other corrections, remember, I'll make a motion except the amendment from the March 1st and the...
March 20th.
20th.
Okay, a motion has been made.
I'll second.
Second.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, a motion's been made, probably second, to approve the amendments as corrected. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, moving on, agenda adjustments. I have two. Under new business, we need to add 37 to the budget amendments. A new one has come in. And also, under new business, add number 10, the Gates Surplus Van. Gates Surplus Van. Is there anything else to add to the agenda?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to add Senate Bill 542 for discussion as well.
Okay, that would be number 11 then. Senate Bill 542?
542.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted?
Salute, Madam Chairman.
Motion's been made, second. All those in favor of approving the agenda as adjusted, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. Do we have any unauthorized delegation?
No.
Okay. Do we have any unauthorized delegation?
No.
Okay. Administrative reports.
This is for February 18th and March 24th. During the report period, I personally handled 52 items related to planning and zoning, including designing a zoning permit, calls, emails, meetings. David Cowan began work as a new code enforcement officer. That is a part-time position. The planning board of adjustment met in March. The planning board continued to review text. One member has resigned. Three positions will need to be reappointed or appointed at the May Board of Commissioners meeting since two positions expire on May 31st. The Board of Adjustment approved a variance and denied an appeal of the planner's decision. Two positions have terms expiring on May 31st, so appointments will take place at the May Board of Commissioners meeting. Regarding historic courthouse, I did finally receive word back from Clear Skates as they are having a meeting with Andrews Construction and hope to have some sort of plan of action to make by the end of this week. Resilient redevelopment program plan. Governor Cooper required Gates County, as we are a county affected by Hurricane Matthew, to develop a resilient redevelopment plan with consultants that were provided by the state. Consultants have had two meetings with county staff as well as two public meetings. Third meeting will be held in April and that date will be April the 12th. Purpose of the plan is to identify situations, items, and areas affected by Hurricane Matthew that need repair or improvement. Two projects that have been identified as being feasible to include in this proposal to the state for federal funding include cleaning of ditches along roadways and bonding to connect a six-inch water main from the town of Gatesville to the main on the other side of Vince Creek. For the software, we have received bids and a tentative decision has been made pending a few clarifications of software specs and final pricing. All county departments have submitted budget requests. Ms. Holtz and I continue to meet and discuss budget needs with department heads. We are also compared to past year a little behind due to the revow. I have spoken with Ms. Lane and she is working on some numbers and of course, we do realize those numbers will possibly change depending on the outcome of the appeals process. On March 2nd, economic developers from Perkford, Bertie, North Hampton, Halifax, North Carolina State University staff and I met to discuss marketing for the five county area and that is an ongoing discussion and decisions have been made. On March 6th, Chair Hoffler, Vice Chair Olens, and I heard architectural proposals for Central Middle School. Penicillin was the recommended term. The Board of Education approved this selection. Yesterday afternoon, I did receive a QZI application and that was signed and that is being turned in today to the state by Dr. Williams. March 8th, I attended the juvenile crime prevention council which approved two grants for fiscal year 18, alternatives for youth and Genesis. Voluntary act district steering committee met to review file off. March 10th, I attended meeting at REA to receive an update on the broadband initiative and this was followed by another marketing meeting with the area economic developers. March 20th, I participated in Department of Extension interviews for the area commercial horticulture and mastic position. And would like to provide a few other updates. Before you, you have this PowerPoint that was provided by the Division of Environmental Policy. This was the CDVG grant that was available to the school system for wastewater. I along with two other people from the school system did attend this meeting and the project that had been discussed for Buckland will not meet the deadline for this project. The Buckland system has to be, work has to be completed this summer so that it will be in place and functioning when school begins. The school system had to go back and they were wanting to figure out what, if anything, they had that would meet the qualifications for the infrastructure funding through CDVG. They have to meet HUD guidelines because this money is money that was reallocated from HUD projects to CDVG for infrastructure. And one of the things that the school system would have to do is if the project is at Buckland, they have to survey that students and parents at Buckland receive a 70% response rate and then 51% of the respondents have to meet the economic levels that are outlined in the HUD guidelines. So they are working on figuring out what, if anything, they have that would meet these qualifications. The lady who made the presentation at CDVG meeting indicated that there's four and a half million dollars available. They are looking to fund four or five projects and of course, they would prefer to fund projects that are shovel-ready, which means they already have all the permits completed.
Well, I heard what you told them.
That is an update on that. As I said a while ago, I have signed a QZI application that is being submitted to the state today by Dr. Williams. And on another note, the county was contacted, well, there was a, let me track up, there was the essential single-family rehabilitation long pole disaster recovery funds that were available and based on the initial reading, even though Gates County was listed, it did not appear that we would have homes that would qualify. However, on 31st of March, Mike Barnett contacted me and said that the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency had spoken with him and asked specifically was Gates County submitting an application, so he took the liberty of completing the application. It was submitted and at 7:30 on Monday morning, I had an email notifying us that we had received $150,000 from the essential single-family rehabilitation long pole disaster recovery award program. There will be a meeting sometime in April from Mike Barnett to attend and he said, they will have, from what he had gathered from a very little discussion, the homes will have to have been affected by Hurricane Matthew and it has, from what he understood, have at least $5,000 worth of damage from the hurricane. He does not know if that damage can already have been repaired for them to qualify or if they have not repaired it. So that will be something that he will have to let us know after he attends the meeting. He was not sure, he just knew it was going to be at the end of April.
That was how much money?
$150,000.
Do we have to have any report on broadband? I know you mentioned, I don't think you attended the meeting, but any decisions made?
They're still working. They have pilot locations that they are going to roll out in the next few months and they are very close to the REA so they can see how things work. They do have, and I didn't bring it with me, I think Sky Cap or Skywing is the name of the company that they have spoken with that said they will come into the area and help provide the internet service. They are active in, I believe it was 15 counties in the mountains. But they are going to, after they do, the ones that are closest to REA, then they will go down towards the all-inner area because that is still the closest part to REA and they are first focusing on their customers. And he talked about how one of their programs they have is if you have an old thermostat and you need to update it to a new one, one that has Wi-Fi that's programmable, they will provide that. And those are the customers they're going to focus on first in that test area to see how strong it is, if it works, and then they will expand. The timeline, I don't remember exactly what that was, but it's going to be at least a year before it gets further out from the test area.
Yeah, I've had a couple from the rental scenario called, they had lost them and they...
And then, of course, the Alamo Commission is still conducting a survey for broadband. Also, that Citizens League completed this, I believe, on the county website and if it's not, I'll make sure it gets put back up there because we had put it up there at one time.
And that is, the Alamo Commission is looking for broadband over the whole region and at present time, I think we've had 33 or 38 people responding. We need to buy a plan, I believe.
I believe it was 85 was one, yes, it was 85 as of Monday.
Okay, 85 have responded?
No, 85 responses are still needed.
Okay, 85. So I would encourage everyone to go to the Alamo website in the county or to the Alamo Commission and do a short survey. It won't take a couple of minutes. I've done it about broadband because that's something we desperately need, I know, for our citizens, but for our schools and for our students. You know, laptops and things don't work at home if they don't have Wi-Fi or broadband. So encourage your people in your community to do survey. We need those numbers so they can justify. Okay, any other questions or...
It was a way to end it at the time.
Philots.
And what was the planner's appeal that was denied by the Board of Commissioners?
There was a request by a cell tower or a tower company to build a communication tower less than one mile in distance from an existing and the order states that they have to be a mile apart. So they appealed it and the planning board said that no, they did not show the vertical proof that was put upon them to explain why it needed to be less than a mile apart, so they upheld the planner's decision.
Madam Chairman, may I add one more thing that County Manager and I participated in is she had our clerk and myself attend the animal shelter advisory board meeting on 29th of March.
Okay, moving on to additional reports. Tax.
Good morning, everybody. Everybody doing well? I had a CV collected, a report emailed to me there. Any general questions or comments on that report this morning?
It looks like tax election rate is good for this previous year.
Yes, ma'am. We are, we are striving, we're right in line with where we need to be. We're going to generate some foreclosure letters here shortly for those people two years or more hoping that will miss it. Yet another response, of course, the advertising appeared in the paper of those accounts in the Gates County index, so we received a little bit of response from that and everything, so, yes, ma'am.
Can I see, we received about $8,000 from Zakeas?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, that's due. Excuse me. I noticed that we also have come up with the Board of Equalization and Review. We've got to start with that and your recommendation is that we advertise and convene the board on April 21st?
The board can convene no earlier than that date. It could be the 21st or that following week, you know, by the statutes there. We envision we'll go ahead and open up the Board of E&amp;R as we continue with informal appeals with the reappraisal. But that, we can meet no earlier than 21st and anytime after that. And of course, we'll advertise accordingly and pro general statutes, we've got to advertise at least 10 days prior to the first scheduled meeting there, so.
Well, 21st of April is on Friday, I don't think.
Right, and I think that's my birthday, so, but if we need to convene by all means, I'd be celebrating.
Okay, and that's something we need to probably go ahead and so that they can get the advertising going and we can begin that review. If you look at your calendars, on the 27th of, in April, we have our district meeting at Churro, that's on the 1st of July. And of course, in May. And it has to be done between, the new later, the first meeting has to be no later than the 1st of May.
Yes, ma'am, that first might be May, that's right.
So we don't have a lot of room of opportunity.
Probably go ahead and schedule May 1st, I don't know, on that date.
On lending? And what time would be?
About 5:00?
For people who are working and all? What is the pleasure of the board? Is 5:00 good?
The motion, I'll make a motion that we start again on the board on May 1st and probably 5:00 PM. I have it on being 7:00.
Yeah. Okay. A motion's been made that we meet with the Board of Equalization Review on May 1st at 5:00? Or do I have a second?
And the location?
We'll be here.
We'll need to see if they have court and what type of court they have.
Okay. Well, that, we can meet in, we can't meet in the jury room at either time because it has their private meetings, each individual tactile. I like plenty of essential.
We'll have to get the key for that.
But it's pretty difficult.
I don't know if there are rooms available that night. Could you just leave it as location to be determined dependent?
Okay. May 1st, 5:00, location to be announced. We have a note before we can advertise. Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second motion, Madam Chairman.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. So we'll meet the Board of Equalization and Review and that is if you have a pleasure and you think your tax, if your tax rate or your evaluation is not correct, that's when you come and report the Commissioners.
That is correct.
Okay, so we'll do that on May 1st.
$1,700.
$1,700, correct.
It's open for two weeks, is that right?
In a reappraisal year, it actually can extend, I've never heard of this, into, by December. That has never occurred during that reappraisal year. They cannot, you know, stay open later than the distant month of December. That's very rare. Usually, we'll have a chance to entertain all those informal appeals if anybody reaches to appeal further to the Board of E&amp;R. That's kind of generally what happens, so.
I must have got to think in the past that we always set an opening date and a closing date.
Yes, that is correct. And not in reappraisal year, yes, sir, that is right.
But in the April year, you know?
Yeah, there is some latitude extended into the latter part. They must, they must adjourn the board later than December, in this case, 17 for us. I've never heard of that, but that is the reading of the statutes, yes.
Do we have a nice one that is in, in our, at our house, in our legal list?
In previous years, we just usually had that opening date and meeting location. We don't really have a end date. In years past, I think it's not been longer than, as Commissioner Yorman mentioned, within, you know, three-week time frame, we'll go work everything out, but in reappraisal years, really difficult to define. It could be July, you know, August or so. We anticipate that, but it could be the case.
Thank you. And do you have any idea when we'll get the idea about the amount of money we'll have for next year?
Yes, ma'am. I'll have those figures for you this afternoon. We've had a few appeals, both on both ends of the spectrum that affect the budget projections. Some people feel their value is too low and on the other extreme, of course, with value being too high.
Somebody in his house, it's too low?
Yes, that's been a few of our appeals. We started answering the phone on Friday afternoon, actually, a few telephone appeals, a few walk-ins and into yesterday and, of course, today. And oddly enough, that has been a few of the issues, so we don't hesitate, you know, we investigate in that property, taking another look, making sure our date is correct and, you know, taking another opportunity to look at those properties. You'll have those numbers. It'll be interesting, you know, with the overall appeals to, you know, estimate what the board, who is going to the board and those kind of numbers, but I anticipate getting that to the County Manager this afternoon.
Thank you. I wasn't being apologized for. Okay, moving on.
And we do have a few refunds, yes, ma'am, to refund, yes.
That's right. I'm sorry. I have it right here in front of me. Okay, the first is a refund for $105.97 to an individual whose car is immigrated in Virginia. And I see all the proper documentation is attached. What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion after we refund the $105.97 as requested.
Do I hear a second?
Second motion, Madam Chairman.
Motion's been made, probably second, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay. And the second refund is for $128.73 and this is, it would pay twice the debt set-off program and the taxpayer as well.
Yes, that's correct. You have that documentation as well.
And, yes, appropriate papers are attached as well. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion, Madam Chairman, for the request of refund number two, total amount of $128.73. Second.
Motion's been made, probably second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other departments have reports that they'd like to give besides what they have written? Have questions for one of your partners if they're not here? Okay, moving right along, articles of interest I have a bunch to read to you. This is from Miss Erin Jack. If you remember, this is from the Tri-County Animal Shelter and Adoption Center. We met Jack and this is, I need to read the first three paragraphs. "Jack Amon is an eight-year-old lab, black lab mix who was adopted for the Tri-County Animal Shelter by the retired judge Tom Amon of Virginia Beach in August of 2010. Jack came to the shelter as a stray who was afraid of everything and everybody. He was also heartworm positive. Jack now lives a happy and healthy life in Virginia Beach and loves and enjoys being with people and his animal friends. It may be interesting to note that Jack's dead was the first judge in the state of Virginia to sentence someone to jail for animal cruelty. In 2005, when Tom retired, he was the last judge in Virginia to ride a horse to work at the courthouse. Over the past several years, Jack has done many things to help his homeless friends at the shelter, including providing high-end corraling of dog beds for all kennels and donating funds to build the two new fenced-in play yards." And remember, Jack loves being famous, this is in a paragraph I am not supposed to read, but anyway, if you, every time he's mentioned at Commissioners' meeting, the judge donates $100 to be used in addition to the shelter. So we need to make sure that we mention Jack.
Yes, ma'am. And I, and doesn't matter how many times we mention it, there's a multiplier if it's not one time, so. Certainly mention Jack. And we look forward to the donation.
Okay. So that is very, very important. And it's a wonderful, what the judge should do back. Okay, yeah, County, Calor, just remember that on April 27th, we have our district meeting and we'll talk about that later, about getting, riding together and all that. Okay, there's no public hearings. Old business, we have the historic courthouse, but we are waiting to report it in a week, so that is, we don't have anything new to report on that. Okay.
Madam Chairman, while you are talking about the old courthouse, I received a couple of calls from some of our citizens who also, that live in the Gatesville area and have historic homes, that want to make sure that our engineers have addressed the weight of the trucks that have currently increased to a grid coming by the old courthouse if they, if they're taking that into consideration. I could not answer that, the weight of the trucks is, you know, from the log yards and other things as well. To know, I've not read anything on that. I don't know if any of my colleagues have conceived, was it not the engineers that addressed that weight in this?
I don't know if it's been addressed there, but I do know that the construction manager and I have talked about it and when, Ms. Pete, who can, Mr. Pete came to look at the bricks, we also discussed that as well.
I think it was a consideration that passed about trying to have a bypass coming through by the courthouse, of course, you have to go, if you wanted to get bypassed or, I think, walk around 32, wanted to get whatever, but we've talked about it in the past, I don't know whether in possession or not, property transportation or not, see if we ever made something like that.
I do remember that conversation that we had about, because it's not an easy bypass to, people come, oh, 37, I mean, when they come through you or this way, instead of taking the bypass 158 business, or if they come 37 up from Zines, they would have to buy, or buy Tegel. But I don't think we've, I don't think we've ever mentioned it in D O T. Maybe something we need to look into. We'll make our, you know, talk to Gretchen Power. Okay, moving on to new business. Senate Bill 363. Ms. Lane, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, ma'am. That is kind of just for...
Uh, yes, ma'am, that is kind of just for information. That, that bill, oddly enough, is, is still in its infancy stage. It's gone through a couple of additions there. Um, and what, what recent, how Senate Bill three sixty-three indicates is that the, um, I would say the discretion of the Board of E and R previously held to make decisions regarding taxpayer appeals, um, anyone who brings in a certified appraisal, independent appraisal. It, Senate Bill three sixty-three more or less indicates that more weight is to be given, a total weight is to be given to what that appraisal value ultimately is. So, uh, the literature and the information I forward to you is just kind of beware. A lot of people reaching out to their legislative people to, to take a look at this. It could dramatically affect, obviously, the way forward to E and R. The county commissioner voted for this property tax commission in Raleigh when they came in, so... You know, it, it is, like I said, it's gone through a couple of readings there as, as indicated. Um, what will ultimately happen, I think everybody's watching it, you know, Administrator's Department of Revenue. It really takes away a lot of authority previously given to, um, the Board of E and R, whether it's comprised of your county commissioners or a board in place by private citizens. I thought that was interesting with the influence and the way that, that bill originated for that. But, uh, any questions on that?
To your knowledge, uh, Ms. Lane, has that ever been addressed before? I'm kind of surprised.
Oh, yes, to my knowledge, no, sir, it's, it's never really come up as discretion. When that appeal of a taxpayer issue, that, the burden proven naturally on that taxpayer, and then they come forward with the Board of E and R, you know, it's, it's a, it's a new, uh, newfound thing, if you will, a kind of developing, so...
Well, the problem I see is that as well, is that if, if you as the assessor and the higher assessors that we bring on to assess property, you say the value is one thing for all the properties in the county, and we have several citizens that comes in with a certified appraisal, say, well, no, you're wrong. Well, guess what? That next-door neighbor says, okay, if their property is, is a hundred fifty thousand dollars less, why isn't mine less? And so, you've got a dollar effect. So, it could really, uh, affect the whole appraisal process. If, uh, if it goes this way, because it's not an isolated, one-person situation. Uh, let me read the board. Somebody was sent out by North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. It says, "Senate introduced, Senate Bill, uh, three sixty-three, introduced to change appeals process for property evaluations. On March twenty-second, legislation was introduced in the Senate to change the appeals process for property evaluation. The Bill SB three sixty-three, which updates the machine react, would require Board of Equalization and Review to accept a property valuation provided by a certified real estate appraiser, chosen by the property owner during the hearing rather than a county's evaluation. Furthermore, it would mandate that subsequent appeals to the property tax commission involve a property valuation from a certified appraiser mutually selected by the county and the property owner. The bill creates problems of equity and process for counties and property owners, and significantly changes the current appraisal and appeal process. North Carolina Association of County Commissioners opposed SB three sixty-three and urges members to relay county concerns to your senators." So, this is what's been sent down from, uh, Association of County Commissioners. I think we need to write a letter to them. Uh, I would ask County Manager to draft a letter for us, and we could tweak it the way we would like it to be, and, uh, and send it to them as soon as possible.
I would say send it to all, like, to the Senate and to the high school members as well.
Your honor.
Delegation. Also, I'm afraid that it's going, it's going to be have and have nots. If you're going to spend the money to get an appraisal, and you're going to kind of find the money, you'll pay enough money to, we'll say what you want to say. You, I hope that would be true, but I'm afraid it would be true.
I, I agree, there's a little bit of, um, yeah, not, not danger in that, that is a possibility, certainly. And as Mr. Jordan indicated, we, we get into a, a realm of, particularly when we look at fair and equitable value across, we, we may not have that. In fact, if we've gotten this one fee appraisal, dictating value of X number of dollars, but... We just wanted to make the board aware, it'll be interesting to see how that comes down, uh, with everything.
Kind of surprised that we haven't experienced someone bringing in a, an appraiser of their own to challenge.
Well, we have had, we have had people bring in our appraisals, and we, and we look at that. But we also look at the surrounding properties, sometimes, you know, you can take an isolated case. This home might be a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, but in the neighborhood, it might not bring that, if, when you take in all the surrounding areas.
I think what we've done in the past, when we have a certified appraiser, we'll have our assessor to go out and take another look. That's standard procedure. And once you do all the balances and observations, then they come back and they plead, except generally what the assessor comes back with. Sometimes it's an adjustment, sometimes not. Does that need the emotion to draft as well? Yes, uh, Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that the county manager draft a letter for us, uh, respond to our Senate in-house on SB three sixty-three. You'll send out to us and make a replacement one, we do a little bit, and, uh, authorize the chairman to sign it.
Okay, a motion has been made, properly seconded, to draft a letter by County Manager in reference to Senate Bill three sixty-three, uh, that, and send it all to us, and the others look at it, and then the chair sign it. Certainly, I think we need to be alert on this issue. Okay, any additional comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, thank you. As always, and it is important to read those little, uh, what the NC, uh, C, 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 N, Z, each week about the legislative process, because sometimes things are putting deals that we need to keep a sharp eye before it gets too late and we wake up to a new ballgame. Okay, I believe we have some budget amendments. The House, it's your turn.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, the first budget amendment is from, um, the Board of Elections. Excuse me, Ms. Gordon has asked to take, um, funds from her unemployment expense and move it to her salary part-time in FICA to actually cover a March payroll for her part-time employee. I did ask Ms. Gordon to, to please try to attend the meeting today in case she had any questions. She did email me and said she had conflict with her schedule and would try to get in as soon as, uh, her appointment was over.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the budget minimum for seventy-eight dollars, uh, as the funds have been reallocated.
I'll second the motion, Madam Chairman. Has reflected budget provision number thirty-three.
Okay, a motion's been made, seconded, to approve budget amendment thirty-three for the Board of Elections to cover part-time salaries and FICA. And this is for the payroll in March?
Yes, ma'am. Remember, part-time salaries run, I mean, time sheets run from the middle of the month to the next middle of the month. So, she has already allowed her part-time person to work these hours and, and with this money.
Okay. And additional comments? Okay, the, uh, motion has been made, seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thirty-four, we have approved one, uh, correct, uh, corrected one, excuse me. Uh, number thirty-four is in your pocket that was on the table this morning. Uh, this is also from the Board of Elections.
Budget amendment thirty-four, um, Ms. Gordon would like to move, um, funds from her attorney fees, election day, um, and unemployment expense, so that she can have, um, a part-time staffing through June. So, it would be a total of, um, two thousand sixty-two moved within her budget.
And Madam Chairman, I'd like to know why we need part-time help in non-election year? Why do we need additional part-time help? And what type of, what type of, already a question? And if I can add a little something to that as far as thought, uh, to Mr. Felton. With, uh, with keeping that in mind, uh, when, when we look at that, is there, is there a need for, for additional personnel in all cases?
I know, so I think March, April, May, and June, certainly, there are no elections.
I did question Claudia on, um, the amount and the hours she thought that she would need, and this is the amount that she wanted to move, which is why I asked her to please be here in case you had questions or concerns.
Is that an issue also for their board not asking you members off to put, uh, to us?
That's why she was asked to be here.
Madam Chairman, um, I mean, with all due respect, this is, uh, a matter of should be taken up. They have a board who is manager over that position. The request has come for us, uh, to approve reallocation of funds. The funds appear to be there. We're not taking funds out of fund balance. They're being reallocated from the budget items. I, I think we should take that up as a separate issue with the Board of Elections, uh, with the management, uh, process. And I would make a motion that we go ahead based on the fact that they do have allocated funds to approve reallocation, uh, as a question.
A motion has been made, you have a second?
I'll second the motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, a motion's been made, seconded.
And if I may remind you that you did allocate four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars earlier from fund balance for this position already. Just as a reminder.
Yeah, I remember, that's what I was sticking in my mind, that we had already done that in this previous month.
So, this is the segment of third request for additional money?
Correct.
Right, I'd say again, I think that, like I say, with all due respect, that this is something that we need to take up with Board of Elections, we can have a meeting with them. And, uh, just ask them for justification on how they're doing it. We're not approving, this is not fund balance money, this is money coming from attorney's fees. So, they're taking from attorney's fees and, uh, election day poll worker rent and unemployment expense in order to pay this. So, they're taking it from, from one budget line, I haven't put it in another one. And therefore, you know, it's not taking anything away from the county, this will be allocated. Now, if it comes from fund balance, I, I, I agree, I mean, there's some question there. But just for this particular situation, uh, to deny the funds that seem to need that would be, uh, a little irresponsible.
But she could also have used this money to, done the four thousand dollars that we did, did take from fund balance to cover election day and all that. I mean, here she has, she's taking. Um, she's decreasing that. Why didn't she use that money then? She said the justification for that was to pay for the workers.
I think it would be a need, we need to have a, a meeting to, to hear a justification on this. We pay full-time employees to cover these positions in this time. Why do we need part-time people to cover the same time that their employees already paid to cover?
Okay, let's, let's do the issue that's before us, and then I think we're going to need to have another, uh, question. The issue before us is whether we have approved this budget amendment or not. Okay, a motion has been made, properly seconded, uh, to, uh, transfer two thousand and sixty-two dollars, uh, that the Board of Elections, Ms. Johnson, has requested. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, I think at this time, we have one more budget?
Clear.
Yeah, okay, and we'll get to, uh, make a request after this. Okay. Um, thirty-seven.
Budget amendment thirty-five.
Oh, okay, yeah, right here.
This is a budget amendment from cooperative extension. They want to move from salary to, um, their telephone line item, two hundred and thirty-four. Um, the explanation was because they had to carry the telephone charges when the Board of Elections were, had moved, and they had a shortfall of the two thirty-fours. They want to move it from salaries to telephone.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chairman, I'd make a motion that budget revision number thirty-five, be, uh, be allowed to move from, uh, the account numbers on the, uh, budget amendment.
Okay, a motion?
Two hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Motion has been made to, uh, for to, to add to the budget provision number thirty-five, moving two hundred and thirty-four dollars from personnel to telephone, then to, um, to the center.
Sir.
Okay, a motion has been made, properly seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So, that is approved. Okay, budget request number thirty-six.
Okay, um, this is also from cooperative extension to move from, from their salary to, um, work comp, the amount of forty, and it's because of the shortage of work comp funds.
Okay, and as I might have forty dollars for personnel for work, workman's comp, or from workman's comp personnel.
Personnel to work.
Move, we grant budget revision number thirty-six, and I second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Motion's been made, is seconded, approved the budget revision thirty-six. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Budget amendment thirty-seven is added by Sheriff Hathaway, and it is to move from boarding inmates, thirty thousand, to capital vehicle to purchase, excuse me, new patrol vehicle.
Is it attached that was laying on your desk? Yes, yeah, it's attached.
It's to, um, purchase the new patrol vehicle that was totaled in recent collision.
High recent?
Sunday.
So, Sunday, I believe you said, Madam Chairman.
Um, budget request has been made for, I'm sure, um, for thirty thousand dollars to buy a new vehicle from, and take the money from boarding inmates, uh, to the capital vehicle line. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'd make that motion, Madam Chairman, that budget provision number thirty-seven be allowed and, uh, taking forward what Commissioner Jordan says, is that these monies are already available, it's just moving from one line item to the other.
Okay, did I hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made, and seconded, any discussion?
Uh, whatever. Sheriff Hathaway, uh, what about the insurance?
That's my question, too.
For the vehicle.
Sir?
What about the vehicle insurance?
That, the insurance is going to take care of what's, the vehicle's...
That, the insurance is going to take care of what's, the vehicle's value back? The problem is that I don't, you need to get the money.
Please.
Yes, sir, the insurance is going to take care of the, the money, or the value of the vehicle. However, when I get that, I still don't have enough to purchase a vehicle. I don't under, well, I do understand, but I want to make this clear that I don't see any more exit circumstances than what I have here. I had one spare vehicle. When my deputy got that collision on Sunday night, he's now in that spare vehicle. I don't have any more vehicles. If something happens to one of my guys or girl's vehicles today, I don't have a vehicle to put in. So I felt that this was exit circumstances, that I tried to get a vehicle and replace the one that was totaled. And the monies that's collected from the insurance, you can, whatever, but I, I, I have the money, um, to cover it, and it's plenty of it in there. I've done the figures, I've sat down and gone through, but it, this, rest is consumed.
Right, right, there's no question of the need for a vehicle, just, uh, backfilling the funds, you know, bringing the funds back, uh, my question. Sure, we probably won't get what it's going to take to replace it.
Absolutely.
Certainly, uh, whatever comes in, that goes out, who's not insurance carrier for that?
The North Carolina Association of County Commissioners.
Thank you, I went blank, but also we do not, they have, they're just, they, today is the first day that they've been able to look at a vehicle, so we do not know what they're going to cover, how much they're going to cover, or if they do cover, when the money's going to come in.
All right.
Okay, the, uh, motion has been made, promptly second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Uh, Sheriff Hathaway?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep, I had a number of accidents, and...
We have.
And I know you're going to take some type of action.
I am. Um, let me explain, accidents previous to this one. Um, you know, we don't intend to happen, of course, you know that.
And I listen.
But we do, um, my guys, my guys, um, work at night shift. The majority of those collisions happen at night with deer, any kind of wildlife. Um, the charge was red, it was two black, biggest ones I've ever seen in the red, but the other one, same car hit two deer. Uh, the other car hit another deer, so it's, these are nighttime guys working at night. It's very hard to see them in the daytime, not at, not in, and definitely not at night, but they're, they're using extreme caution. I had a meeting incident, and this, this accident from, from, uh, Sunday night is being internally investigated by me, and I found that...
Was that deer or lion?
No, that was, uh, high, high-speed chase perceived with two circuits that was violating server laws, and, um, they were really working nights to get it. So, uh, the cause of, the initial cause of, correct, was something that happened inside the vehicle, but I'm going to take corrective action on that. But right now, like, I can sit here all day and tell you what I'm going to do, but I, I gotta get a vehicle.
Well, I'm, I'm just interested, um, and I, listen, I've hit a deer, so I understand that, um, but, um, it is, um, we certainly, I know there are rules of pursuit, and...
Yes, ma'am.
Because not only can my deputy be, um, injured, uh, we can replace cars, but deputies don't want to lose a deputy.
And that's, that's the first thing I'm going to think.
And also, innocent people sometimes can get injured, especially if it's in a chase situation.
But you know, he's alive, he's going to win with that car, it's been in half, it's in the center of the chassis.
But, you know, there's all the people on the road, too, that have gotten injured, so...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Yes. Uh, we both, I thought we had both. Um, the senior, citizens appointee to Senior Tarheel Legis, Legislature. This is a program, um, Senior Tarheel Legislature is, uh, kind of involved with the Department of Commerce, uh, area, uh, A, Agency on Aging, and we need to appoint a representative from Dix County. Do we have to, um...
Yes, you do have, excuse me, you do have to appoint someone, because Mr. Ellie Smith has resigned, so you do have the one application in there, and that is from Andrea Clark. And you have, she did have to state on here that she does work for the Department of Social Services.
Okay, will that cause a problem?
That would be up to you, because we did have, she did have to make you aware, and that was a question that was asked of, when she applied, that you just, you have to make the commissioners aware of that you do work with the county and what your job entails with the county, and you can see that is the last statement on her application. I suppose the do not click.
So she works with prices. I don't know what all these measures stand for.
She, she works with the WorkFirst, the, uh, LEAP program, which is the Low Income Energy Assistance Program.
John Fair.
Correct.
What's EBNAS?
Food and Nutrition.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chairman, I, uh, in, in looking at this, too, I see that what, uh, potential conflicts is not... So certainly, uh, I think that's called a nomination for Andrea Clark as, uh, as representative. Second.
Okay, motion has been made, is seconded, uh, to appoint Andrea Clark to be our representative for the Senior, um, Legislature, for Crown, um, Tarheel Legislature. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, um, GITS.
If I may, before we go to GITS, number nine was the citizen appointed to the Area Agency on Aging Regional Advisory Committee, and there were no applications.
Has it been posted?
Yes, it has been posted. It was posted when the Senior Tarheel Legislature Committee was posted, but there have been no applicants. Ms. Clark just applied for the Senior Tarheel Legislature position.
The Area Agency on Aging.
Yes, so that one will remain open.
I'm pretty aware, but have we had anyone serving that, you know, Mr. Preston, Reverend, Billy Preston is always, uh, very active with the agent group, um, and other things dealing with the agent. Don't know if we've thought about contacting him personally, but see if he would be interested in it.
As you know, we do not typically contact people personally, um, and if, from my understanding from the visit from Laura Almarico, it appears that Mr. Smith was going to resign also from that position as well.
Well, I know he has a home in Hartford, New York, as well as one bay on fourteen that he is, you know, so I think might be contemplated, who's I don't know. Uh, but I would suggest to all of us, and, you know, to encourage people to, uh, apply, and so we do have an opening in the Area Agency on Aging, the Regional Advisory Committee. I don't think it needs maybe quarterly, I think it's quarterly. Quarterly, so it's four meetings a year, probably in Hartford. Uh, so if you know someone, encourage them to apply. We need citizen participation. Okay, move the nine to the GITS.
This is a request from GITS to sell a van, two thousand eleven Ford conversion van, and Ms. Lester had requested a minimum of five thousand, and you can see my recommendation based upon what Ms. Lester and I discussed is that if it's listed for a minimum of five thousand, or for a reserve of five thousand and it's not sold, then when it's sold, the next time, or put it for re-auction, it can be sold for whatever it sells for. And Ms. Lester was in agreement with that.
Okay, so this is a twenty-twelve...
Two thousand eleven.
Okay, it was acquired in January twenty-twelve.
Right.
Okay, you heard the recommendation to, to go deals, um, to sell the two thousand eleven Ford conversion van of GITS, they have a new one coming in?
Now, move that we grant this request, and I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Motion has been made, is seconded, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, Senate Bill five four two, Mr. George, Mr. George.
Yes, this is a Senate bill that's, uh, been proposed in the Senate to provide funding for construction schools, public schools in the various counties of the state. And the bill has going to be proposed, uh, to request a one point nine million dollar general obligation bond, bond, rather, uh, for the state purposes of, of funding public schools. Now, it appears that this is going to be put off, uh, approved by the citizens of the county. It says the purpose is, it is the intent of a general assembly by this act to provide, provide, subject to a vote of qualified voters of the state, with issuance of one billion nine hundred million dollars, general obligation funds of the state for the purpose of providing funds with any other available funds for public school facilities through grants to counties for public school capital outlay projects. Now, we're in the process right now of trying to, uh, replace, renovate Central Middle School, uh, with probably a car somewhere near, uh, eight million dollars. We've got two older schools, Buckland and Cooper. I certainly, uh, would like the Senate to move forward with that, of course, the outcome is going to be, uh, based on our citizens, informed citizens, uh, votes. Uh, and so we're going to need to promote this, but I think that we should encourage the Senate to move forward with this bill, uh, to provide these funds. We don't want to have to just tax our citizens every time we have to build a school, uh, just adding a tax to, to, uh, to build it, when, you know, we can do it through, uh, bond issuance and spread across state with it. So, I would like to, uh, for us to, we don't have to do it at this, by our next, by this, at this meeting, but certainly, we need to generate a letter to, uh, encourage our citizens to move forward with this, and also to support this bill, uh, once it goes through, that we'll get the public support if we need.
Certainly, I thought that was a wonderful step, because it would be, it would be a referendum for the tax state, or, um, and then, of course, we could apply toward the funds, if we have enough. Concerning that, um, of course, we don't know what final version is going to be, but anyway, the Senate bills, certainly, I think we could go ahead and authorize a lot of these sent to our, uh, delegation, uh, to the General Assembly, that in Dix County, that we certainly support any help right for building of schools, because that is a critical need that we have, and, uh, without tax base, we can only do so much. And I think we have done well with our tax base, but we can't, we've got so many needs. So I, I'm going to make a motion to, uh, have our county manager to write a letter in support of Senate Bill five four two.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Please to sign it.
Uh, we sign it, Madam Chairman.
You agree with that?
All we get, all, all, everyone has signed.
Everybody's signed, okay, everybody's signed up. Okay, um, I'll read the letter, you go read?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, going back to the Board of Elections, I do think we do need to have a meeting, a joint meeting with the Board of Elections Board and Board of Commissioners, and let's try to get everybody on the same page that, concerning this. And... What is the will of this board?
Uh, just for, uh, idle clarification, uh, on that, a budget amendment, are we sure there's not a mistake?
On which, which one, thirty, thirty or forty? The one that's on your desk is the one that's, the one that was thirty of the bond?
The one that was in town.
Okay, all right, the other one, I think, right, all right, all right.
Yes, this is correct.
It was hard to digest, I'm kidding. It was saying Monday, but we're doing it opposite.
Right.
What is the will of the board?
I agree, Madam Chairman, and, and I believe I've heard, or we've heard from our colleagues, commissioners, that, uh, we certainly need to meet. And, and that was a question I was, uh, certainly heavy on my mind, is that had she gone to her board prior to submitting the budget amendment? Just to see, because I would think that the board would want to be the ones making the recommendation to her, or at least certainly for her, in order for paperwork to go to Ms. Holmes. Anytime she looks for money, I would just, I don't know what their procedures are, I would think.
Okay, um, the...
I think we also have a, uh, corrective action request due to that fifteenth, or, I think that is May fifteenth.
I think that's the correct, I didn't check my class.
Maybe it's the fifteenth.
Yes, I'll make it date.
What is it, we're going to have it, or...
And that is the commissioner's meeting.
Yeah, we'll work out prior to, or, or whatever.
Uh, yes, we could have, we could have a prior to. Uh, would, you think six, I know, there...
It'll work out, but you, would you be close there?
Probably.
It would, and that was discussed.
Well, you know, we have sent a memorandum of understanding, what was it, two years ago, that we've never, that's still out there, that we might have that. I was thinking if I, the board doesn't, well, there'll be a new chair in June one.
It would take effect in early July, but also depending on, and this was a discussion we had during the budget meeting, dependent on where the State Board of Elections ends up, under, if it's with the State Ethics Commission, or if it stays independent, will also depend on how many people that are on the board. They have recommended movement to State Ethics Commission and adding a fourth person to the board, but that has been appealed.
Four is the, you really have a odd number.
That was a discussion, too, about those.
Four, you have a lot of two-two ties. Well, that's not our fault.
Well, I took a guess, I think it was fifteen.
Okay, a motion, a, a suggestion has been made that we meet with, trying to meet with the Board of Elections on May fifteenth, prior to our Board of Commissioners meeting, uh, at?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Okay, um, is that your...
I'll read that motion.
Okay. Mr. Ford made a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, to name, uh, Commissioner Fruit, um, Felton, any discussion? Hearing?
And mine, I just mentioned fifteenth is on Monday as well. Well, I need a call.
And, okay, so we might have to change locations. Okay, hearing, uh, any, all comments, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And we can get back with us if that's acceptable date for them. You know, new business. Well, both we are. This is a record. Okay.
Does GITS any raps before they start recording?
Uh, uh, it's in my car. Uh, Reed Thomas was... Reed Thomas was here a couple weeks ago, and he had some, I had a list of, maybe some ideas of maybe the grants we might qualify for, it's in my car. And, uh, we did.
Are they going to carry it to a flyer?
And I, I'm not sure which way, some of them have to be from a not.
Profit.
Some can be maybe from this, from a county government, I mean, from an agency. And he has known of some where they have been a collaborative effort, which we are kinda trying to do, collaborative effort, concerning that. And I, I meant to bring that in this morning with me. And so that we can get looking at those ideas. Anything else?
Uh, just a comment, and not in so much, you know, with our Senate bill, Commissioner Jordan brought up, but as I read the information we get, I still don't see our county commissioners questioning legislature about the lottery money.
Actually, I just got an email. I'm gonna find where.
That we could use for our school system.
As it was, you know, that was the campaign to get us to vote for, it was educational lobbying.
Yes ma'am.
And it was supposed to be forty percent of it.
I actually just received it only going yesterday, and Monday, the Prequiem County Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution requesting restoration of the statutorily authorized appropriation of lottery funds to the county. And Mary Cunningham, who's the clerk to their board, has sent a copy of that resolution.
By the time.
And they have, and like I said, they did this on Monday.
Are there some you want to support as well?
Well, I started, say, it's certainly because they, it's kind of a bait and switch type of something that the state has done, they sold it as an educational lobby, and then they used it for everything else.
Now, if you'd like, I can read this to you, we can edit it with Gates County.
Okay, read it to us.
Okay. Or I can, or it's someone that can print it, and you can take it up after the closing session, either way, but pursuant to Chapter eighteen C of the North Carolina General Statutes, the North Carolina State Lottery Act and the two thousand and five Appropriations Act was signed into law establishing the North Carolina Education Lottery. The Act created the nine-member North Carolina Lottery Commission to initiate, supervise, and administer the education lottery. And whereas the North Carolina Education Lottery was promoted and supported on the basis of proceeds enhancing local governments' ability to adequately provide for education expenses, and whereas the distribution to counties budgeted for proceeds in fiscal year sixteen seventeen has been drastically, drastically reduced to a hundred million in contrast to the two hundred and eight million at the previous statutory funding rate of forty percent, which amounts to a hundred and sixteen thousand, a hundred and fifty-eight dollars in Prequiem County, in contrast to the two hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and eight at the forty percent rate. And whereas pursuant to state law, the lottery funds that are allocated to the counties can be used for education for capital outlay projects, including planning, construction, enlargement, improvement, repair, or renovation of public school buildings, and for the purchase of land for public school buildings, or for equipment to implement a local school technology plan. And whereas it is extremely difficult for the Boards of Commissioners and the Boards of Education across this state to plan for improvements in school buildings and for technology equipment with the reduction of lottery funds. Now therefore be it resolved that the Prequiem County Board of Commissioners respectfully request the governor and the North Carolina General General Assembly support the allocation to counties at their previous statutorily authorized portion of educational lottery funds to be used for capital needs and technology. Be it further resolved that the Prequiem County Board of Commissioners fully supports the current SB two thirty-four, which would allocate additional lottery funds to Tier one and two counties on a grant basis for school capital construction. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution are forwarded to the local legislative delegation to the North Carolina General Assembly, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, and the other ninety-nine North Carolina counties. Now for us, we receive about a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And I believe we were estimated, it would be a little bit less than what Prequiem is, I was thinking three hundred thousand, but I'm not sure if that's what they were estimating to receive, so probably two hundred and thirty-eight, two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Certainly, I already, I mean, every little bit helps. I support this, I think we need to support the resolution. We need to tweak it to reflect our. And, uh, do I hear a motion to Senate Law, in support of restoring lottery funds?
So move, Madam Chairman.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to support the restoration of lottery funds, a resolution to support restoration of lottery funds to the various counties at the General Assembly's, I mean, at General Statutes, right? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. And I'll, I'll give that, so we can look at it, see if it's what we want to say. Okay, um, any, all new business? Hearing none, we'll move on to citizens' comments.
No one's signed up.
Okay, no one's signed up. Okay, that's the first two, that we've never had a citizen comment. Uh, commissioner's comment, starting with Mr. Free, Commissioner Freeman.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. First of all, certainly I'd like to thank the participation that we have today, and things that have been brought forward to us. I would like to mention, excuse me, on another note, that, and not being choked, but, and that is, we have a wounded warriors event coming up. Gates County now has our sixth, this year will be our sixth year, for Gates County Wounded Warriors Wild Turkey Hunt.
And when?
And, and that's gonna be April twentieth, twenty-first, and twenty-second. Uh, we'll have X number of wounded warriors, I'll not advertise that, of course, until the event. But I would like to take this chance, not only from the county, but myself, for thanking all of our citizens that have participated. We have guides and hunters, we have landowners, Lou Lou Yor, Billy Nguyen, Jonathan Jones, I'm sure I'm forgetting some more folks, but that's have supported this for six years, this will be the sixth year. And it's the most important event, there are times we have as many as three hundred of our citizens participate. What the wounded warriors get out of this is a relationship with Gates County citizens and Gates County folks. They're not only good to them, but it's been a relationship that has gone from year to year, and can't do any more than thank our folks for that. Ray Campbell and myself, again, this several years ago, as I mentioned, the hunt clubs have joined in, VFW supports it, by providing a lunch, so we feed everyone for free, there's no charge at all, so come out and eat, and gather with them. We do have some rifle, we do sell some t-shirts and caps, so be a continuing event. So with that, I'd like to thank everybody that has participated, and that do participate. And I'm sure less than folks, I apologize for that, that's just CRS, so thank. Award, we will have an award get-together, and that'll be Friday night, and there'll be some rifles and, and what have you. And Saturday, we will end the event, and there'll be some photographs, and opportunities to talk to folks. So we do have men and women wounded warriors, and we have had an excess of two hundred, almost three hundred wounded warriors in total, thirty years, participating. So, thanks to Gates County for, for doing this, so, so, that, Madam Chairman.
And just to add to what Ray has said, the wounded warriors, it's, it's a great event, even not, not attended that Friday night event especially, it's quite heartwarming to see these young men and women as they participate, and some of them are more physically able than others, and it's just a good event. I appreciate everybody showing up today, and I don't have a whole lot to brag on, and I got, I do have three from you, but they work here.
I'm sorry.
But I thank you for showing up and participating.
I'd like to thank everyone for being here today to observe and be a part of the county commissioners meeting. Billy, I can't brag, I can have some, some of my district here.
You win, you know.
Yes, we're doing well. But we do appreciate the fact that we're, we're involved in the local government process, because this is what really makes the difference, we see the difference in our lives based on what decisions are made here at these levels. I was also asked to make an announcement that on Saturday morning, here in the courthouse, there will be a Democratic Party debate at ten o'clock. And so I think Judge Coleman's gonna be the speaker. So, that announcement is, is for ten o'clock on Saturday morning. And thankful for being here. I do wanna thank all of our employees for dedication, and continue to keep up good work.
I'd too like to thank you for coming. The local government is a government that is closest to you, you see it in the grocery stores, or at the post office, or down the street, or at church. And certainly, it's always nice to hear from our citizens. I apologize for my call, but I've just been under the weather. But anyway, hopefully I'm not contagious. But listen, thank you for participating, and, you know, if you have a concern, contact us, that's what we're here for. Okay, with that, then pursuant, North Carolina General Statute one four three dash three one eight, that's part eleven, we are airing to a closed session for legal and economic development. Do I have a motion?
So move, second.
Will it be made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll take a short break. Do we have a motion to come out of closed session?
So move, second.
Motion's been made and promptly seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes ma'am, I, Madam Chairman, I have a motion I'd like to present, and that being that we continue on with the agreement we had on a month-to-month basis as pertaining to the plan.
Okay, with county manager performing planning duties?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, that, the motion is for us to continue on a month-to-month basis with the county manager performing planning duties, I hope. Motion's been made and promptly seconded, in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. I do hear a motion to recess.
So move.
To, no, this is a, we not only have one meeting right, so we can adjourn.
So move, second, for adjourn.
Okay, a motion's made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.